Of the quarums of both the village council and the planning commission here this evening, we will call both of those entities to order in this process. So what I'll do is I'll call the village council to order and have the roll call. And then Gary, if you could call the planning commission to order.
I will.
Okay. So at this time, I call the special joint meeting of the village council and planning commission to order on Monday, May 20th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Madam, um, madam clerk, roll call for the village council, please.
Bailey?
Here.
Frost?
Here, sorry.
Helma?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Logan?
She's on her way.
All right.
Gary?
Yep.
All right, then, also at this time, I call the, uh, the May 20th meeting, a joint session meeting of the Village of Oxford Planning Commission to order. And Madam Secretary, I ask you to call the roll for the planning commission as well, please.
Sure. Baylor?
I'm here.
Bama?
Here.
Kirk?
I'm sorry, Cook?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
Douglas?
Here.
Helma?
Here.
Hyler?
Here.
All right, please rise for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. The pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll make some introductions before we get underway. And before we get underway, I know it's very formal in here, but our goal is that this is a town hall. Don't think of this as a, as a council meeting. We are here to listen to you. We are here to listen to the issues. We are here to listen to our attorney, Bob Davis, our planner, Mario, I never say your last name right?
Ortega.
Ortega. And a representative from the Michigan Municipal League, Chris Johnson? Chris Johnson, who will sort of moderate this. Again, the planning commissioners and the village council members, we really want to listen to you. We want to listen to, you know, the community. And so we'll, we'll shut up and, and we'll let Chris moderate and kind of work through this. And so, you know, we're, I, we don't have any goals of limiting discussion. We don't have any goals of putting timeframes on, you know, saying three minutes is all you get. That's not, that's not our goal here tonight. Our goal is to have an open and honest conversation about recreational marijuana and the potential of having that in our, our commercial, as a commercial use in our zoning. So, uh, so that's what we're here for. And, um, I'm going to turn it over to, um, I guess I can start with, who am I starting with? Bob?
Sure.
Bob or the planner? We'll go Bob, planner, and then, um, Chris. All right?
If I could, Joe?
Yes.
Just for those moving, uh, coming in now, we do have some documents up here. One's printout from the MML on the recreational marijuana questions and answers. And then there's also a thing from our attorney that was set together a few months ago regarding the statute, things that are in the statute. And then a zoning ordinance map, because as we talk about certain areas of the village, the zoning ordinance map might be pertinent, and if you need it.
Thank you.
So by way of introduction, we, as a village council, are currently on a moratorium with respect to recreational marijuana issues. That was voted on, um, a while ago. And as part of the moratorium process, which means we're not currently accepting applications or, or processing any applications, we, um, agreed that we would have this public forum so that the village council could hear from the residents and then provide guidance back to the planning commission to do, um, the, carry out the policy of what the village council decides. And give you some updates, I, at our last meeting involving the moratorium, I advised you that it was my understanding the governor would be moving up the date to which the regs would be issued. The first set of regulations concerning recreational marijuana will in fact be issued at the very beginning of June, some say actually June 1st. Applications concerning recreational marijuana may be heading towards the state of Michigan by September, so it may be that the, the village would have to act on an ordinance scheme at or before September, or have a prohibitive ordinance in place, um, or, so that it could be protected from litigation. Unlike the medical marijuana process, which required if you do nothing, you're doing everything to keep it out of your community, the way the framework was set up for recreational marijuana is you have to do something to either prohibit it or to allow it in your community. So this evening, we're, we're hoping to hear your thoughts for and against, um, this type of activity being in your community. And this is a public forum for that. Mr. Planner?
Um, good evening. My role in the process would be if the council provides any further direction to the planning commission, and the planning commission undertake the ordinance, general ordinance creation process, I would, I would help draft a language for, for any kind of regulation from a zoning standpoint. The key thing, uh, we have to understand is that this type of use is mandated under state, uh, statute that will be regulated by a state department. So they will be taking on a lot of the details with regards to the operation and who would be authorized to operate this type of facility. The, the local ordinance from a zoning standpoint at least, what the planning commission would consider, would be related to the, the various zoning aspects, meaning the location of where these would be placed, any kind of special, uh, use requirements in terms of things like hours of operation, size of, uh, facility, separation distance from other, uh, facilities. Then we would also go into the approval criteria to allow some, someone to come in, uh, to operate such a use, and then also, uh, any type of application procedures. So those are the details that would be part of the ordinance should, should we get to that point. And beyond that, uh, there are a lot of details involved with regards to the different types of uses, I, which I believe questions can be answered tonight. And then, uh, I believe our representative from the Michigan Municipal League will, believe, provide a lot of that general information in the beginning.
Okay. And we'll have Chris introduce himself real quick, but after we do, and once we get into the, the meat of this discussion, um, we'll, we'll approve the agenda real quick. That's the next item. Chris, if you want to introduce yourself, and then we'll approve the agenda.
Hi, I'm Chris Johnson. I'm, uh, general counsel to the Michigan Municipal League. I found that my second career now is recreational marijuana. Um, there's been a lot of questions asked about this particular subject, and, um, we have some answers, but not all the answers. And this will be a good forum tonight to let us know what you're thinking of as far as marijuana establishments. So looking forward to getting on with it.
All right, thank you, Chris. Thank you all for all of your introductions. Moving on to, uh, the approval of the agenda before we open it up for public comment.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for the village council as presented.
I'll support.
There's a motion with support to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Planning commission, if you do the same.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the planning commission as presented.
Very much, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the table to accept the agenda submitted tonight. I also have a second on that, so I would ask my fellow commissioners to please vote aye or nay in favor of that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. That motion carries. Agenda is approved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would now move into our public comment section. And again, council, we may chime in at times, but our, our goal is to have, and I'm reiterating this because some folks came in, uh, after we had started, um, talking, but our goal is to have an open and honest conversation about recreational marijuana and its commercial use, um, in, um, in the Village of Oxford. So I'll turn it over to Chris from MML, and he'll, he'll sort of moderate this discussion. So, you know, it's not a free-for-all, but orderly fashion kind of thing, so, um, but I'll let Chris manage all that. Thank you.
Very good. I thought by way of, uh, quick introduction, we should talk a little bit about what we're going to be talking about. It's quite clear that all of the, um, individual possession issues are already in place. The possession of small amounts of adult-use marijuana, that's the term, by the way, that the state is using, adult-use rather than recreational, um, is already in place and already legal. So we're not really discussing that. The statute in the second instance actually creates recreational marijuana establishments is the phraseology they use. And it's kind of interesting because the phraseology in the recreational statute is different than in the medical statute. So there's going to be some confusion, some overlap, and probably a lot of litigation before this all gets sorted out. Uh, the, the, uh, medical marijuana, um, statute that the legislature finally passed to site facilities in the state took about eight years. I'm not thinking we're going to wait that long for the recreational things to be decided, but there are a lot of issues in the recreational statute that just are not known. And quite frankly, until we get the, the actual litigation and a judge to say this is, what this means, we'll probably be saying, "Well, I don't know." So that's a little frustrating, especially when you're a lawyer like I am, you'll want to know exactly what's going on. And in this case, we're not going to be able to tell you exactly what's going to be going on. Uh, the state has created six different kinds of licenses in the recreational statute. And the, uh, statute will include growers' licenses and three different kinds of those. It'll include a transport license, it'll include, um, testing facilities, it will also include, uh, a new micro-business, uh, which is going to be a vertically-integrated license. That's probably got the most, um, interesting thing because we don't have that at all in the medical situation, so we're going to watch and see what that really means. Um, I have been in a lot of meetings with the Director of Marijuana Regulatory Authority, that's a new name, it used to be the Bureau of Marijuana Regulation. They're moving a lot of different things around in Lansing right now. But Andrew Brisbo has been in a number of seminars I've been at, in a number of question-and-answer situations. About a month ago, maybe a little longer, for the first time, uh, he indicated to a group of people that he thought that the state was going to accelerate, uh, getting emergency rules out. And he's pretty confident right around June 1st, they'll have the first draft of the emergency rules ready for, uh, publication. He also indicated at that meeting that they're hopeful, but not, they don't want to get tied to this, um, but they're hopeful to have a system in place to accept applications for these, uh, establishments around September the 1st. And that's the first time I heard that particular date in play. We kept hearing up until that time that we hope we're, we're ready by December, um, which is when they were required to have their rules in place. As a result of that, uh, any community that wants to regulate it, uh, in, in any degree, has to have ordinances in place by the date that they start accepting applications. So that's a big difference in terms of September, maybe early September compared to early December. So they're moving the timeframe up significantly, which means you got to get ready. As was previously mentioned, this statute has an opt-out requirement as opposed to the medical marijuana, which was opt-in. And what that means is that if the village council does nothing, and you just let the time go by, you will automatically be allowing every type of license in the village. So if you want to regulate it at all in terms of what kinds of licenses, or when the hours of operations might be, or signage, or any of those issues, you have to have an ordinance in place by the time the application is submitted. Otherwise, the Marijuana Regulatory Authority will issue that license. Okay? Director Brisbo was very clear that you had to have your ordinance in place beforehand and not wait till after it had already been submitted. Those are the basic ground rules. So I guess at this point, I kind of want to, uh, open it up to everybody to make their comments and let the council know and the planning commission know what your feelings are on this issue. Yes, ma'am?
Are you able to better define the six licensing types? What does transportation mean?
Oh, and, I'm sorry, and I, I will say, and I, I don't like it because it's so formal, and that's not my goal, but for everyone's voice to be able to be heard on the, the video, if you could come to the podium. Again, I know it like defeats the whole, like, let's not be formal, yeah, um, so let's be formal instead, um, I guess.
I can do that. I would like to know if it's possible to do a short definition of what the six licensing types are. I don't know what those things mean.
Alrighty. Um, well, grower license is kind of obvious. Oh. Just a guide list for it. Oh, okay. Grower's license is obvious. It's how much can, there's a type A, B, and C in that license format for how many plants you can grow. So that one's pretty easily done. I beg your pardon?
Is that personal use?
No, personal use is totally separate from this discussion. Personal use is, um, just carve it out and set it aside for right now. People are allowed to possess certain amounts of cannabis, they're allowed to have it in their possession. The statute's real clear on where and how, um, and that the village cannot touch. So we're not, I just want you to set that aside. Transporter licenses are not called for in the recreational statute with definitions, so those will be defined by, uh, the Marijuana Regulatory Agency. So I expect a heavy dose of the rules to include what that is. Uh, testing facilities are exactly that. They're testing the grade of marijuana, how much active ingredients are in it. There makes certain certifications as to, uh, the potency of the marijuana that's sold in various establishments. And there'll be retail licenses, um, allowed. And there's another, um, undefined, uh, which again is sort of frustrating, is I say, "I don't know," but there's going to be other licenses as described by the rules. So we don't know what those may or may not be. But Director Brisbo was pretty confident he was going to be able to, um, define in much greater detail the transport licenses.
Can I chime in on transporter? What, while, while the village could prohibit or regulate having a transporter located here, we will not be able to prohibit transporters from crossing our boundaries. Otherwise, we'd have a big interference if, you know, you can't drive through Livonia, you can't drive through the village. So we can't stop an otherwise lawful transporter from trans, transiting through our community.
Yes. Do you want to, uh, and we're only doing this so that the people at home can figure out what we're saying.
So just to clarify, uh, transporter, if I wanted to buy some, they could come here and sell it to me, but they don't have to be located selling here, or they're business-
No, no, transporter is just moving marijuana from point A to point B. For example, from the grower to the retailer.
Right. You can't, it's not like a food cart where they can stop and sell.
Right, where I know they have those in Ann Arbor. They do have-
Yeah, they do.
Yes, they do.
So here would just be somebody who's taking it generally from the growing facility, transporting it across communities to a, to a, to a retail, for example, or to a testing lab.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's open to only questions with statements as well.
You can, yeah, it's, it's open, it's an open dialogue, so whichever you wish.
All right, first I'll start off with a question on marijuana retailer. It says, "A person licensed to obtain marijuana from marijuana establishments and sell to otherwise transfer marijuana to marijuana establishments and to individuals over the age of 21." Would that be considered like a delivery service?
No, what, that part of the ordinance, again, is directed at the individual possession of marijuana. So we're not-
Is there any idea for a delivery service? Because I feel like that would cause a lot more safer transports of marijuana and prevent a lot of people from doing illegal things to obtain marijuana.
My guess, this is a guess on my part, I've been in enough meetings with Director Brisbo that he indicated that they would probably do that in the rules that are going to come out in June. But I don't know that for a fact because I haven't seen the rules yet.
And then the other statement I actually had was, "I used to be a grower in California, and just the job, uh, growth and how much money I was able to make makes it well worth legalizing just because it was able to bring me out of being completely poor and actually being able to start a savings account." Thank you.
Joe, can I ask a question before you go any farther?
Sure.
You said micro-business. What falls under micro-business?
We don't know yet.
I mean, what would a dispensary fall under? What would a, somebody wants to deliver it from the dispensary-
Dispensary is going to be the retail, you know, aspect of it. A micro-business is not well-defined, other than it will be a vertically-integrated, um, situation where up to 150 plants can be grown, processed, tested, I'm assuming tested, and then sold right out of that business location. But since, uh, the Marijuana Regulation Authority has to put those rules in place, I don't really have a good handle yet as to how that business will look.
I just, which one of these six licenses would you put it under?
It's going to have its own license.
So there's going to be a seventh that doesn't exist yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Or eight, or nine.
Or 52, I get it.
Or whatever. Um, I think they're trying to keep it, the number of licenses down, just so that there's not that much confusion. But I haven't seen the rules yet, so I can't speak to that yet.
Thank you.
If I might, uh, just to provide some context from the medical marijuana side, uh, I've worked with other, uh, other locations in which the applicants, uh, for medical marijuana, uh, within one building have a grow facility, a processing facility, a provisioning center. The state in the medical marijuana specifically says they must be separate entities in terms of entrances and exits. They have to be controlled specifically that way, even if they are within one building on one, uh, particular site. So for medical marijuana, they do that. And another way, um, aspect, just in terms of the difference is that the, um, state regulatory can do is that they've had a tendency to what they do is called stack licensing for growers, because the growers are based on a number of plants. However, they've seen fit to, in certain locations, not in all, but in certain locations allow for the stacking of licensing for growing, meaning a person can have two Class C licenses for growing.
Thank you. It's clear as mud.
It is, yes, it is.
I think you stole my line.
Let Chris moderate. I'm going to let Chris moderate.
Oh, Chris, if you please.
Step back and listen.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Gary Douglas. I am the current chairman of the Village of Oxford Planning Commission. And, uh, so I have some procedural questions I would like to bring up. We met approximately a month ago in a joint session between the distinguished members of the village council and my esteemed partners on the commission, and we talked about some of this in, uh, little less than vague terms. And we acted upon a timeline at that time that we had understood and believed that it was certainly longer than now what we're faced with. And so back then, in April, when we agreed to accept a moratorium on, uh, allowing commercial licenses to be located inside the village limits of Oxford, we felt like we had better than a year, or almost a year, I should say, to be able to draft that, uh, set of ordinances and submit them to the council, and also to allow time for public comment and et cetera, et cetera. Suddenly, I find that that timeline has been cut back significantly by maybe up to six months. And so that fills me with a great deal of concern because I feel like our ability to be able to create a very high-quality product for you now has become somewhat limited. And Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's very likely that we could see the village be deluged with, uh, applications as soon as September.
Well, if you, if we don't have, if we don't have something in place, the, the state will grant the licenses.
Exactly. And so that's my concern, is that I think that under our present circumstances, which is a six-month moratorium that would run from April to May, June, May, June, July, August, September until September, that's our six-month moratorium that, that we accepted at that time, with the possibility of perhaps making an extension. I think that I would request the council, please reconsider that original moratorium and perhaps adopt some other type of delaying strategy to allow us, as your commission, to really work very diligently on this and prepare a very good quality product for you in a timeframe that doesn't, you know, drive us crazy, but also allows us time to be able to create a great product for you. And I'm hoping that as time goes on, perhaps there's an opportunity to see the work product of other communities that are also working on this, that we can then use as a framework and as a guideline for us, to be able to put together a package that would suit us very, very well. So that would be my request to the council. Not only do I always request guidance in terms of what direction you want us to go in, um, Chris mentioned, Chris, correct? Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you, Chris. I, up to, right now, six, maybe seven, maybe 52 licenses that are going to be available. Is there a subset of those that you want to consider, or do you want something for all of them? I would, I would prefer to have as much guidance from the council as possible so that we know, as we've had our, our, our member state in the, in the past, having direction and, and having a, a solid target to be able to shoot at is really very, very helpful for us, so that we know exactly what you want and can, and try to satisfy that. And, um, that's the extent of my comments. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Gary. Yes, sir.
Hi, I made you read, uh, I'm wondering what the benefit would be from the aspect of allowing marijuana retail sales of things and businesses in our village and township, from a monetary position, from a tourist position. I would think that these types of, uh, locations would really attract people to break into them, they would have to be secured. I don't know what kind of garbage or things that come out of that, what the byproducts are. Those byproducts have to be handled in a very special way. They could be something the kids could get into, if there is some kind of aroma sense filtration. I know that growing marijuana, I understand, has, has got all kinds of issues with it as far as what comes out of it, what goes into the air, whether they're making the oils out of it, whether they're making foods or products or things of that nature. I would myself recommend personally that hold off and make it so that we don't want any licenses in our village, give it six months or a year, see what happens in the surrounding areas, because we know there's going to be a flood of it in the area. Unless we really want to make sure that we have people that can come and buy pot here in our town and compete with the bars and restaurants and the other places for real estate, but if, unless there's a value in higher taxes or something else that's really bringing some value or quality to the village, I really don't think that it's something that we should jump on the bandwagon and say, "Sure, let's have all this going." No matter if they make a lot of money or not, I don't know if that would be revenue back to us as, as a township or a village, or if it's just going to bring in a crowd of people we might not really want to have coming here into our community. of people we might not really want to have coming here into our community. That's all I have.
You know, I might make a quick comment on that. If there, it's the retailer license, if there are retail licenses in the village, some of the tax money will be given back to, on a prorated basis, to the retail licenses in a community. But I do want to point out that there is a very complex formula in the statute as to where the money goes that's collected by the state of Michigan. First off, in the first two years of the tax that's collected, $20 million goes to research, and then the next category of where money goes is the state of Michigan itself. So all the regulation of the marijuana businesses will be paid for out of that fund first. As of two months ago, Andrew Brisbo indicated at a meeting that he had 180 employees already. So a lot of money will be going to fund that. And then there's a formula that says counties get so much, the local village gets so much, roads get so much, but, you know, after a while, your particular share will be limited to how many establishments you allow in the village itself that are retail establishments, so. And Chris, is, there's no clear indication, like, what that timeline would be? It could be two years from now, it could be 10 years from now, correct? We just don't know.
When we would start seeing money?
When we would start, if we allowed them, when would we start seeing revenue?
Most likely a couple of years.
Yeah. It was interesting, just for your information, the medical marijuana had a, an excise tax that the local units of government that signed up for it were going to be eligible for, but the, the statute, the rec statute passed and it eliminated that tax. So a number of communities that thought they were going to get the benefit of the excise tax on medical marijuana are no longer going to receive that. So it turned out to be about a three-month window.
So 180 employees at $50,000 to $70,000 a piece, you're already one and a half million dollars right there, coming right off the top of 20 million for research in the research facility. So what I was thinking is, from the aspect of the lottery, which is going to fix our roads and pay for our schools, our schools aren't getting any funding, it's dropping off on our roads, it's really in bad shape, so I really wouldn't think that the state of Michigan is going to pour money into our township, our village, because we allow people to be selling pot here, but that, that's my...
But it, but it's, yeah, it just gets tied to the retail in, in terms of the formula that was adopted in the statute.
We do get to charge a licensing fee annually up to $5,000, so that revenue would be direct to the, to the...
It would be, uh, re- every year for each facility?
Yes, and you can use that for designated law enforcement purposes and whatnot, to cover your costs. You can't just charge it, you have to justify it, but it's up to 5,000.
And, yes?
Hello, my name is Brandon Barber, pardon my attire, and I know I look like a little, I'm a part of the riffraff, but, yeah, I didn't know it was a little kind of formal here. So I just want to come up here and make a quick statement. When it comes down to, like, when you guys talk about revenue, I believe it would be very, very beneficial for you guys to allow access to, for people to grow, to buy licenses and everything. When it comes to supply and demand, it seems to be always be in demand, and it, it's something people can already get, and we should take advantage of it. And just, for example, look at the market and look at other people's success, but, you know, I, I don't know, that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Joan Reed, and I moved here in 2006. My husband and I purchased a Victorian home right downtown here. I'm just a little nervous, so excuse my speech and everything. I just want to get it off my chest. I'm retired from the school district, and I now work in, for the public school system, and I now work in the medical field, and I am aware that this is not about whether we're for pot or against pot, it's about community. It's about our community and how hard everybody has worked here to bring this community up to a nice-looking standard and to keep building on that. It's about the people that live here, it's about the children that live here, it's about the people who visit here. That's what it's about. I have a vested interest in here. I am working really hard to make my house look nice on the outside and on the inside, but I am, I'm, I love this community, and I really think it has a lot going for it. I wonder if any of you on these boards have ever gone to any of these places, visited any cannabis growers, any retail stores, because I can tell you, I went to a store, and I want, I, I urge you to go there. I urge you to visit and ask yourself, what does this bring to the community? What does it look like? Sit there in the parking lot and watch the people come on in. You know, do you see a few people doing a little vape in their car? Did they buy an edible? Because they can eat it, they can hang around your park here, that you work so hard for all those events, and made it look so beautiful, and you want to invite more people to your community here. One thing that I do know, from the, the medical place that I work at, people will travel a far distance, a very far distance. You have no control where they're coming from and who these people are. I'm not saying that they're all bad, I'm not saying that they're all good, but you're going to get some people that aren't going to be desirable to this community. I would hope that you would not make anything in this walk, walking area of this downtown area at all. I mean, it would just, just make me sick if you did, I would want to probably move out of here. That's not the type of community that I, I moved into at all, and I, I just really love what you guys have going here, and are really working really hard to make it a nice, clean, family atmosphere. We're excited about a hospital that's coming, we don't know where, but that has a positive impact on our community, and you know it does. We can't say that about any of this growing, we can't say any about this retail, I, you just got to question it. So I really urge you guys to go visit some places. I'm sure that if you called these places ahead of time, they'd let you come in, and you could look at it, but look at the community around it, and the people that are going there. And if nothing else, I urge you to think about the children under 18 years of age, and how it will affect them. To be able to see that every day, maybe in 10 years, it'll be just an everyday thing, but we don't have to jump on the bandwagon right now, we can change it later. But think about those children, that's what we are responsible for in this community, at the very least, as taxpayers and planners. We are responsible for our kids here. I wouldn't walk my grandkids down here if I thought that somebody was smoking pot and they could get a contact buzz, no way. We haven't made a law that I've heard of, that, yeah, you can smoke pot in your house, you can smoke it out of sight, you can smoke it in front of your kids, because there's no law that says that you have to be so many feet away from those children. Well, you got to think about the kids, if nothing else. It's not going to make us rich, but please, think about it for our community, our downtown, and we're working so hard for it, and it's, it's looking more beautiful every day.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Brian Clutier, I'll just state that I don't live here anymore, I don't have any skin in the game, but I will tell you, as the director of one of your largest public services in the community, I like to think that I do, and that what I have to share with you matters. You know, I loved the nine years that I called Oxford home, I enjoyed every minute of it, I appreciated the opportunity to get involved in this community outside of the public library, but as a resident, sitting on the planning commission and sitting where you sit this evening. When I stepped down to move back to my hometown, I never thought that I would be standing in this town, having this dialogue. You had the opportunity at your last meeting to opt out, that didn't mean necessarily that you couldn't opt in in the future, it just gave you the opportunity, without spending taxpayers' dollars in this community, and without putting yourself in legal jeopardy, to have the dialogue, but you put the cart before the horse here. And it is a, a condition that I ask, you know, have you bothered to go downtown and ask your local merchants whether they want it in their community next door to them? I don't think you probably have, I'm going to guess you haven't, maybe you have, you might surprise me, but I doubt it. With that being said, you had an opportunity in a window to do this the right way. I don't know why you felt like you needed to be on the cutting edge of this, because there are other communities that could give you the guidance that you need to make some sound decisions here, and, and, and I'm kind of embarrassed to say that you're the town council.
Thank you, Brian, and I will remind you, Mr. Clutier, and the rest of the public, that at the very beginning of this process, this council said there's a lot of unknowns, and this is part of gathering those unknowns and, and part of understanding what the community needs. We were not going to jump the gun into a process that frankly, nobody has dealt with, and there's a lot of communities that went straight to banning it without this process, without having this conversation with our residents. So I appreciate your comments, I am quite proud, and, and I'm honored to serve with these individuals, and we're here to listen, that's, that's part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just going to speak as a resident tonight. So Kate Logan, Ten Crawford, I'm also very proud to be on council as well, but, so I just want to kind of debunk a couple of the things that were said today about marijuana. First of all, I think when we're, we've got to fight a stigma here, and I said this before when we had our meeting with planned, or with the planning commission as well. I think obviously, some people are looking at this like, this is a new generation, like, we're pushing this agenda, we're trying to be cutting-edge, or whatever, that's not true. People have been smoking marijuana since the beginning of time, okay, it's just that it hasn't been legal before. Now it's legal, now let's find a place for it, because that's our job, that's what we need to do here. So I want to ask those people that think that it is going to bring some kind of negative perception to our downtown, what we, what you expect to do with the empty businesses then? What do you want me to do about the grungy liquor stores that I'm looking at? Because no one here has ever conveyed their concern about the amount of alcohol that is distributed in our town, or that's available to our children. But I will say, the last time I checked, as of the 2014 stats, I just looked up, over 37,000 million Americans, or 30, I'm sorry, 31,000 Americans died of some type of alcohol overdose, but there have been zero documented deaths because of marijuana. So, I mean, if you're going to pick your poison, and if we're really truly worried about the safety of the children, I would rather than be smoking cannabis. Also, 100, out of the 113 communities in Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County, 100 of them voted yes on proposal one. So as a council member, I have to make the decision to vote against the will of my constituents. That's not what they asked us to be lawmakers to do. Another fact I want to talk about is the revenue, because it seemed a little bit hazy on that, but from what I understand is what they're predicting, by 2022 and 2020, or 2023, the tax revenue is going to be about $262 million. And I'm going to look at every opportunity that there is to bring a revenue stream into this community. Now that being said, I have walked into dispensaries before, I know what it looks like when it's done right, which is something that we can do. We can't control the fact that it is legal, so if you don't like the smell of marijuana, maybe you should go talk to your neighbors, because they're going to be smoking it anyways, it's legal, there's nothing you can do about it. So what we need to do is look at what we can do responsibly and how we can regulate it the right way, so we can control what that looks like. Because I don't want to miss opportunities and look back on it and think, wow, we really look like 1930s, you know, post-prohibition, like, you know, it's, this is the times, it has been the times, if people, I mean, the fact that it's legal now, and there's not swarms of people walking around downtown Oxford smoking pot, tells you that just because we adopt some kind of retail shop into our community, doesn't mean that this is going to be a hash-bash 2020 in Oxford, Michigan. It's not what this is going to look like, folks, it's just going, it's just going to be done responsibly. And one of the things that we did talk about in the planning commission in the village council joint meeting, is the fact that if you give them the ability to have a retail shop in our downtown versus banning it, which I, I can make so many comparisons on what that does to society when you repress them versus allowing it, and what the outcomes of that look like, but, so if you give them a, a way to purchase it legally, that is taxed, that is regulated and controlled right by us, in essence, they're maybe less likely to go ahead and grow it in their backyard, or try to grow it in their basement. And the thing about marijuana is, it's a finicky plant, so it needs a lot of moisture, it needs a lot of light, more lighting lamps or heating lamps is going to mean more risk for fires in, in your home, that's more work for my chief, my fire chief, more moisture is going to need more black mold and mildew, which means the value of your homes are going down, because your neighbor, half his house is destroyed from damage. So we need to think about this, not as in a, you know, do I want it around me, do I want, it's, it's around you, it has been, you know what I mean? It's just legal now. So I would say, let's encourage the thought process behind, okay, so there's nothing we can do about it, it's legal, what do we want it to look like here? Because I think that that's something, that's the conversation I would like to personally see happen, versus, I don't want this in my town, like, this is, you know, we're, we're small, quaint little town, but we're a small, quaint little town with people that are going to be growing pot in the backyard. So I say, let's take a responsible look at how we control the distribution and the retail of it, because like I said before, I would be much more concerned about the appearance of yet another dingy-looking liquor or beer store versus a marijuana store. And real quick, because I know I'm, I got on my soapbox. But, you know, as far as what it looks like when it's done right, I do have a friend from high school who moved out to San Francisco, and I know that's kind of the progressive Mecca, we're not there yet. However, the store he runs is called Harvest Side, if you ever look it up online, it's actually one of the largest distilleries in the state of California. It looks like an Ikea, it's beautiful inside, it's like the Ikea of weed. He has a 401K and he makes six figures, it's fantastic. All the employees, it's like 100% job satisfaction rate, which probably, I know why, but, you know, it's just, there are ways that you can do it right. I think the stigma behind marijuana is that it's going to bring in this dingy, cruddy group of people, and it's going to look like horrible, and, I mean, again, how many, and when we, and it, it sounds very convoluted, and it's intimidating to approach this, because now we're like, how many licenses are there? Like, what is, okay, well, for comparison, how many beer and liquor licenses are there? That doesn't seem to faze us, we're used to drinking, we're just not used to smoking yet. We'll get there, folks, if it's not in this room here tonight, it'll be in the next five to 10 years, and by then, we'll be behind the ball, but that's just my opinion, thank you.
Hi, Lynn Dillon, 51 West Burdick, I have one question. If you're going to control what comes in and how it looks, you can't even clean up a dingy liquor store, you have no control over it. What leads you to believe that whomever comes in is going to be pretty productive and contributing to society, when you already have a dingy liquor store no one can control?
Yes, sir?
I'm Jack Curtis, Village Planning Commission, Oxford Township trustee. I have a question for both Chris and Bob, you made a statement. If this board, in its moratorium, comes up with an ordinance, or doesn't come up with an ordinance, or decides to opt out, and the state gets all the regulations put together... an ordinance, or decides to opt out and the state gets all the regulations put together, what can the state do? Can the state come here and say, you can have one? If they get 11,000 applicants?
Okay, they just grant the license. So unless there is a system of regulation in place by the village, the state will grant a license.
Okay.
Using the state criteria. So, so, so let's say we don't have anything in place. Let's say we just don't do anything. Somebody applies to the state, they grant the license, and they impose their condition, the state condition, so we have no control. And I think what, what, what you were just saying is, let's get ahead of it and get control over it. If we have a prohibitive ordinance that gets filed with the state, they will not issue a license until we're ready.
Until you're ready.
If you, if you repeal and get your ordinances in place.
Okay. I was told, and Chris, I'm glad you're here, that it's going to be sort of like the liquor license. That's why you ended up in the year 2000 or 1999 when they allowed liquor sales at gas stations. They changed the law. You couldn't buy liquor in gas stations. All of a sudden, boom, they changed the law. If we don't have an ordinance finitely defined what area marijuana can be sold in, let's just pick C2 for a dispensary. Somebody might come here and file an application through the state, and the state will say, well, you know what? It's taken them too long, they can have one.
Your opportunity right now is to regulate time, place, and manner.
So with us trying to plan it and put it in an area, in someplace, we would circumvent the state coming in and say, we can put it anywhere you want. Okay. So Katie's right. She's saying that she wants to regulate this, some area that you would say, this is it, so that the state doesn't come in and say, okay, now you can sell liquor at your gas stations. Think about that. The reason they didn't allow that, the state liquor license, was you could drive up and buy liquor and drive away and drink. So restricting where, or having ordinance in places to do those things is pretty smart on the Village Council Planning Commission, so that you do have firsthand grasp of it before the state comes in and says, you can do this. You know, then, then all of a sudden, it's Katie by the door, you get 10 applicants, they're forcing it on you, pretty soon it comes to, well, okay, we got to have it everywhere. My point is, there are 312 possible pounds of marijuana that can be grown in this room with the 26 people that are in here right now, in your backyards. Three hundred and, I, three hundred, my calculator's over there. There's 26 people, you can each grow 12 plants, and if you got a pound of plant, that's how much marijuana just us in this room can grow. I'm thinking that Johnny and Suzie on a Saturday night want to have a hot tub party, so they go to a dispensary, pick up a little bit and go home. Everybody else is trying to grow theirs because they can't go to a dispensary and grow it. I'm trying to avoid this onslaught of growing uncontrolled. I, I've heard prominent people say, well, I'm going to grow a pot of that in my backyard and see, see if I can do it or not. And I'm going, I don't want 300 pounds in my neighborhood being grown for anybody to have access with. If you can prevent that by having the person that wants just a little bit for the weekend, that's, that's pretty smart planning. But having this law is, I don't, I can't even explain it, to grow 12, 12 plants marijuana everywhere in the village you want, right next door to a church, but you can't put a dispensary 250 feet to a church, but you can grow 12 plants next to a church. I can grow 12 plants next to a school. The law. But if this village grasps that and puts some sort of control on it, we would then be prepared when the state came in and said, hey, you've got 10 licenses, applications here in the village. So I, I just, I know the law is crazy as heck and it's, I just can't see everybody in the world growing pot in Oxford.
As you mentioned, though, it's still a possibility that people could do that, so you, you could get out ahead of that situation as you described.
Thank you.
One, just another interesting fact, the actual statute does not say whether that's 12 per person or 12 per household, which is kind of an interesting question. I think that'll get decided in litigation as well. I think we can assume 12 per person just is probably the most likely result, but that's a guess on my part, not a certainty.
I just want to say where I'm coming from. I started working for the village when I was 17 years old, 1985. It's been like 3,000 years since then, but I grew up thinking and planning that if it was legal, you allowed it. You decide where you want it to be, it doesn't always have to be at vertic in '24. The only use that I believe that we don't allow in the village is heavy stamping. And that's because the proximity residential to the heavy stamping would be noise, it just wouldn't work. We allow strip clubs, we allow adult books, we allow, every use is in our zoning ordinance. Not necessarily on a piece of property that's vacant, not necessarily the piece of property that's available, but it's an allowable use with restrictions, with requirements. And if we enforce it and it's done right, we should, if it's legal, we should allow it. I firmly believe everything has its place and we need to find a place for this. And that's just me.
Is there, oh, sure.
Question that I had brought up was, even if this passes, they can't change the state law that we are allowed to grow ourselves, correct?
Correct. As I tried to indicate before, all the regulations in the law that pertain to individual growing, use, and possession are totally separate from what we're talking about today.
So the only thing that people against us are trying to get rid of is revenue for the city, for the state, for the roads, and creating jobs for the people in the city who, like me personally, I'm only working part-time, and having another job opportunity like this would be something that I would look real forward to.
Well, the, the ones that the village could regulate were the six that they specifically talk about in the statute, and then other types of marijuana establishments that are found in the new rules and regulations, which haven't been published yet. Maybe I'll just go through them one more time. The technical terms in here are marijuana growers. Again, I think that's obvious, what they do. The safety compliance facility is a testing facility that I mentioned before. Its purposes are to test the marijuana, certify grades, and that sort of thing. Processor is removing the active ingredients from the marijuana so you can make other products like the edibles. Then there's the micro-business, and I wish I had a better definition for you about what a micro-business is going to be, but they talk about up to 150 plants in a vertical situation where you're growing, you're processing, and possibly testing. I don't know what the new rule's going to actually provide for, but it's a vertically-integrated system. The retailer is obvious, that's the place where you can go buy marijuana. And the secure transporter is, again, moving the marijuana from the grower to the retailer, or maybe the secured testing facility, so, or maybe to the processor. Again, I'll need some more, I'll need to really look at the rules and regulations when the state gives those to us in June, so, but I have a feeling they'll track as much as they can with the medical marijuana statute and the rules and regulations there, so, and those are pretty, pretty strict rules.
Thank you.
This lady, had her hand up. Did you want to speak?
I just had a question. Is there?
Nice dry.
We're just trying to make sure everybody gets.
You were trying to avoid that.
Angela from, I live in Port Harpster. Is there, now, I may have missed it in the beginning, is there like a limit on how many within the village or the township are allowed?
The, the statute says they may limit the number of marijuana establishments within its boundaries. I would say the common sense reading of that sentence is that you can probably limit the number of them and the types of, of establishments as well. Does this village need a big grow operation or not? Does it need retail establishments or not? You know, those are questions you have to decide as a community. Certainly, the municipal league isn't going to make those kind of decisions on your behalf. I do want to caution you, though, that that is different than the statute that regulates medical marijuana facilities, where it says that the local community can regulate the number and types of establishments. But this is an initiative that was passed by the people as opposed to a statute that was carefully drafted and went through the legislative process. So I would argue that when it says, or limit the number of marijuana establishments within its boundaries, that means the types of facilities too. So maybe you would want the testing facility, for example, but not necessarily.
Of the quarums of both the village council and the planning commission here this evening, we will call both of those entities to order in this process. So what I'll do is I'll call the village council to order and have the roll call, and then Gary, if you could call the planning commission to order. Okay? So at this time, I call the special joint meeting of the village council and planning commission to order on Monday, May 20th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Madam, Madam Clerk, roll call for the village council, please.
Bailey?
Here.
Frost?
Here, sorry.
Helma?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Logan?
She's on her way.
All right.
Ready?
Yep.
All right, then, also at this time, I call the, the May 20th meeting, joint session meeting of the Village of Oxford Planning Commission to order, and Madam Secretary, I ask you to call the roll for the planning commission as well, please.
Sure. Baylor?
Here.
Bama?
Here.
Kirk? I'm sorry, Cook?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
Douglas?
Here.
Helma?
Here.
All right, please rise for the pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence. The pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we'll make some introductions before we get underway, and before we get underway, I know it's very formal in here, but our goal is that this is a town hall. Don't think of this as a, as a council meeting. We are here to listen to you, we are here to listen to the issues. We are here to listen to our attorney, Bob Davis, our planner, Mario, I never say your last name right?
Ortega.
Ortega, and a representative from Michigan Municipal League, Chris Johnson? Chris Johnson, who will sort of moderate this. Again, the planning commissioners and the village council members, we really want to listen to you, we want to listen to, you know, the community, and so we'll, we'll shut up and, and we'll let Chris moderate and kind of work through this. And so, you know, we're, I, we don't have any goals of limiting discussion, we don't have any goals of putting timeframes on, you know, say in three minutes is all you get, that's not, that's not our goal here tonight. Our goal is to have an open and honest conversation about recreational marijuana and the potential of having that in our commercial, as a commercial use in our zoning. So, so that's what we're here for, and I'm going to turn it over to, I guess I can start with, whom I starting with? Bob?
Sure.
Bob or the planner? We'll go Bob, planner, and then Chris.
If you could, Joe?
Yes.
Just for those moving, coming in now, we do have some documents up here, one's printout from the MML on the recreational marijuana, questions and answers, and then there's also a thing from our attorney that was set together a few months ago regarding the statute, things that are in the statute. And then a zoning ordinance map, because as we talked about certain areas of the village, the zoning ordinance map might be pertinent, and if you need it.
Thank you.
So by way of introduction, we, as a village council, are currently on a moratorium with respect to recreational marijuana issues. That was voted on a while ago, and as part of the moratorium process, which means we're not currently accepting applications or, or processing any applications, we agreed that we would have this public forum so that the village council could hear from the residents and then provide guidance back to the planning commission to do, carry out the policy of what the village council decides. And give you some updates, I, at our last meeting involving the moratorium, I advised you that it was my understanding the governor would be moving up the date to which the regs would be issued. The first set of regulations concerning recreational marijuana will in fact be issued at the very beginning of June, some say actually June 1st. Applications concerning recreational marijuana may be heading towards the state of Michigan by September, so it may be that the village would have to act on an ordinance scheme at or before September, or have a prohibitive ordinance in place, or, so that it could be protected from litigation. Unlike the medical marijuana process, which required if you do nothing, you're doing everything to keep it out of your community, the way the framework was set up for recreational marijuana is you have to do something to either prohibit it or to allow it in your community. So this evening, we're, we're hoping to hear your thoughts for and against this type of activity being in your community, and this is a public forum for that. Mr. Planner?
Good evening. My role in the process would be if the council provides any further direction to the planning commission, and the planning commission undertake the ordinance, general ordinance creation process. I would, I would help draft a language for, for any kind of regulation from a zoning standpoint. The key thing we have to understand is that this type of use is mandated under a state statute that will be regulated by a state department. So they will be taking on a lot of the details with regards to the operation and who would be authorized to operate this type of facility. The, the local ordinance from a zoning standpoint at least, what the planning commission would consider, would be related to the various zoning aspects, meaning the location of where these would be placed, any kind of special use requirements in terms of things like hours of operation, size of facility, separation distance from other facilities. Then we would also go into the approval criteria to allow some, someone to come in to operate such use, and then also any type of execution procedures. So those are the details that would be part of the ordinance, should, should we get to that point. And beyond that, there are a lot of details involved with regards to the different types of uses, which I believe questions can be answered tonight, and then I believe our representative from the Michigan Municipal League will, believe, provide a lot of that general information in the beginning.
Okay. And we'll have Chris introduce himself real quick, but after we do and once we get into the meat of this discussion, we'll approve the agenda real quick. That's the next item. Chris, if you want to introduce yourself, and then we'll approve the agenda.
Hi, I'm Chris Johnson. I'm a general counsel to the Michigan Municipal League. I found that my second career now is recreational marijuana. There's been a lot of questions asked about this particular subject, and we have some answers, but not all the answers. And this will be a good forum tonight to let us know what you're thinking of as far as marijuana establishments. So looking forward to getting on with it.
All right, thank you, Chris. Thank you all for all of your introductions. Moving on to the approval of the agenda before we open it up for public comment.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for the village council as presented.
I'll support.
There's a motion with support to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Planning commission, if you do the same.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for the planning commission as presented.
Very much, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the table to accept the agenda submitted tonight. I also have a second on that, so I would ask my fellow commissioners to please vote in your name in favor of that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. That motion carries. The agenda is approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move into our public comment section, and again, council, we may chime in at times, but our, our goal is to have, and I'm reiterating this because some folks came in after we had started talking, but our goal is to have an open and honest conversation about recreational marijuana and its commercial use in, in the village of Oxford. So, I'll turn it over to Chris from MML, and he'll, he'll sort of moderate this discussion. So, you know, it's not a free-for-all, but orderly fashion kind of thing, so, but I'll let Chris manage all that. Thank you.
Very good. I thought by way of a quick introduction, we should talk a little bit about what we're going to be talking about. It's quite clear that all of the individual possession issues are already in place. The possession of small amounts of adult-use marijuana, that's the term, by the way, that the state is using, adult-use rather than recreational, is already in place and already legal. So, we're not really discussing that. The statute in the second instance actually creates recreational marijuana establishments, is the phraseology they use, and it's kind of interesting because the phraseology in the recreational statute is different than in the medical statute. So, there's going to be some confusion, some overlap, and probably a lot of litigation before this all gets sorted out. The, the medical marijuana statute that the legislature finally passed to cite facilities in the state took about eight years. I'm not thinking we're going to wait that long for the recreational things to be decided, but there are a lot of issues in the recreational statute that just are not known. And quite frankly, until we get the actual litigation and a judge to say, "This is what this means," we'll probably be saying, "Well, I don't know." So, that's a little frustrating, especially when you're a lawyer like I am. You'll want to know exactly what's going on, and in this case, we're not going to be able to tell you exactly what's going to be going on. The state has created six different kinds of licenses in the recreational statute, and the statute will include growers' licenses and three different kinds of those. It'll include a transport license, it'll include testing facilities, it will also include a new micro-business, which is going to be a vertically integrated license. That's probably got the most interesting thing, because we don't have that at all in the medical situation, so we're going to watch and see what that really means. I have been in a lot of meetings with the Director of Marijuana Regulatory Authority, that's a new name, it used to be the Bureau of Marijuana Regulation. They're moving a lot of different things around in Lansing right now. But Andrew Brisbo has been in a number of seminars I've been at, and a number of question-and-answer situations. About a month ago, maybe a little longer, for the first time, he indicated to a group of people that he thought that the state was going to accelerate getting emergency rules out, and he's pretty confident right around June 1st, they'll have the first draft of the emergency rules ready for publication. He also indicated at that meeting that they're hopeful, but not, they don't want to get tied to this, but they're hopeful to have a system in place to accept applications for these establishments around September the 1st. And that's the first time I heard that particular date in play. We kept hearing up until that time that we hope we're, we're ready by December, which is when they were required to have their rules in place. As a result of that, any community that wants to regulate it in any degree has to have ordinances in place by the date that they start accepting applications. So, that's a big difference in terms of September, maybe early September compared to early December. So, they're moving the timeframe up significantly, which means you got to get ready. As was previously mentioned, this statute has an opt-out requirement as opposed to the medical marijuana, which was opt-in. And what that means is that if the village council does nothing, and you just let the time go by, you will automatically be allowing every type of license in the village. So, if you want to regulate it at all in terms of what kinds of licenses, or when the hours of operations might be, or signage, or any of those issues, you have to have an ordinance in place by the time the application is submitted. Otherwise, the Marijuana Regulatory Authority will issue that license. Director Brisbo was very clear that you had to have your ordinance in place beforehand and not wait till after it had already been submitted. Those are the basic ground rules. So, I guess at this point, I kind of want to open it up to everybody to make their comments and let the council know and the planning commission know what your feelings are on this issue. Yes, ma'am?
Are you able to better define the six licensing types? What does transportation mean?
Oh, and, I'm sorry, and I, I will say, and I, I don't like it because it's so formal, and that's not my goal, but for everyone's voice to be able to be heard on the video, if you could come to the podium, again, I know it defeats the whole, like, let's not be formal, yeah, so let's be formal instead, I guess.
I can do that. I would like to know if it's possible to do a short definition of what the six licensing types are. I don't know what those things mean.
All righty. Well, grower license is kind of obvious.
Just a guide, listener.
Oh, okay. Grower's license is obvious. It's how much can, there's a type A, B, and C in that license format for how many plants you can grow. So, that one's pretty easily done. I beg your pardon?
Is that personal use?
No, personal use is totally separate from this discussion. Personal use is, just carve it out and set it aside for right now. People are allowed to possess certain amounts of cannabis, they're allowed to have it in their possession. The statute's real clear on where and how, and that the village cannot touch. So, we're not, I just want you to set that aside. Transporter licenses are not called for in the recreational statute with definitions, so those will be defined by the Marijuana Regulatory Agency. So, I expect a heavy dose of the rules to include what that is. Testing facilities are exactly that. They're testing the grade of marijuana, how much active ingredients are in it. There makes certain certifications as to the potency of the marijuana that's sold in various establishments. Then there'll be retail licenses allowed, and there's another undefined, which, again, is sort of frustrating, is I say, "I don't know," but there's going to be other licenses as described by the rules. So, we don't know what those may or may not be. But Director Brisbo was pretty confident he was going to be able to define in much greater detail the transport licenses. Can I chime in on transporter? What, while, while the village could prohibit or regulate having a transporter located here, we will not be able to prohibit transporters from crossing our boundaries. Otherwise, we'd have a big interference if, you know, you can't drive through Livonia, and you can't drive through the village. So, we can't stop an otherwise lawful transporter from trans, transiting through our community. Do you want to, and we're only doing this so that the people at home can figure out what we're saying.
So, just to clarify, transporter, if I wanted to buy some, they could come here and sell it to me, but they don't have to be located selling here, or they're-
No, no, transporter is just moving marijuana from point A to point B, for example, from the grower to the retailer. Right. You can't, it's not like a food cart where they can stop and sell.
Right, where I know they have those in, in our-
Yeah, they do, yeah, they do. So, here it would just be somebody who's taking it generally from the growing facility, transporting it across communities to a, to a, to a retail, for example, or to a testing lab.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's open for only questions or statements as well.
You can, yeah, it's, it's open, it's an open dialogue, so whichever you wish.
All right, first I'll start off with a question on marijuana retailer. It says, "A person licensed to obtain marijuana from marijuana establishments and sell to otherwise transfer marijuana to marijuana establishments and to individuals over the age of 21. Would that be considered like a delivery service?"
No, what, that part of the ordinance, again, is directed at the individual possession of marijuana, so we're not-
Is there any idea for a delivery service? Because I feel like that would cause a lot more safer transports of marijuana and prevent a lot of people from doing illegal things to obtain marijuana.
My guess, this is a guess on my part, I've been in enough meetings with Director Brisbo that he indicated that they would probably do that in the rules that are going to come out in June, but I don't know that for a fact because I haven't seen the rules yet.
And then the other statement I actually had was, "I used to be a grower in California, and just the job growth and how much money I was able to make makes it well worth legalizing just because it was able to bring me out of being completely poor and actually being able to start a savings account." Thank you.
Joe, can I ask a question before you go any farther?
Sure.
You said micro-business. What falls under micro-business?
We don't know yet.
I mean, what would a dispensary fall under? What would a, somebody who wants to deliver it from the-
Dispensary is going to be the retail, you know, aspect of it. A micro-business is not well-defined, other than it will be a vertically integrated situation where up to 150 plants can be grown, processed, tested, I'm assuming tested, and then sold right out of that business location. But since the Marijuana Regulation Authority has to put those rules in place, I don't really have a good handle yet as to how that business will look.
I just, which one of these six licenses would you put it under?
It's going to have its own license.
So, there's going to be a seventh that doesn't exist yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Or eight, or nine.
Or 52, I get it.
Or whatever. I think they're trying to keep it, the number of licenses down, just so that there's not that much confusion, but I haven't seen the rules yet, so I can't speak to that yet.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if I might, just to provide some context from the medical marijuana side, I've worked with other locations in which the applicants for medical marijuana, within one building, have a grow facility, a processing facility, and provisioning center. The state in the medical marijuana specifically says they must be separate entities in terms of entrances and exits. They have to be controlled specifically that way, even if they are within one building on one particular site. So, for medical marijuana, they do that. And another way, aspect, just in terms of the difference, is that the state regulatory can do is that they've had a tendency to what they do is called stack licensing for growers, because the growers are based on a number of plants. However, they seem fit to, in certain locations, not in all, but in certain locations, allow for the stacking of licensing for growing, meaning a person can have two Class C licenses for growing.
Thank you. It's clear as mud.
It is, yes, it is. I think you stole my line.
Let Chris moderate. I'm going to let Chris moderate.
Oh, Chris, if you please.
Step back and listen.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Gary Douglas. I am the current chairman of the Village of Oxford Planning Commission, and so I have some procedural questions I would like to bring up. We met approximately a month ago in a joint session between distinguished members of the village council and my esteemed partners on the commission, and we talked about some of this in a little less-than-vague terms, and we acted upon a timeline at that time that we had understood and believed that it was certainly longer than now what we're faced with. And so, back then, in April, when we agreed to accept a moratorium on allowing commercial licenses to be located inside the village limits of Oxford, we felt like we had better than a year, or almost a year, I should say, to be able to draft that set of ordinances and submit them to the council, and also to allow time for public comment and et cetera, et cetera. Suddenly, I find that that timeline has been cut back significantly by maybe up to six months. And so, that fills me with a great deal of concern, because I feel like our ability to be able to create a very high-quality product for you now has become somewhat limited, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's very likely that we could see the village be deluged with applications as soon as September.
Well, if we don't, if we don't have something in place, the state will grant the licenses.
Exactly, and so that's my concern, is that I think that under our present circumstances, which is a six-month moratorium that would run from April to May, June, May, June, July, August, September, until September, that's our six-month moratorium that we accepted at that time, with the possibility of perhaps making an extension, I think that I would request the council, please reconsider that original moratorium and perhaps adopt some other type of delaying strategy to allow us, as your commission, to really work very diligently on this and prepare a very good quality product for you in a timeframe that doesn't, you know, drive us crazy, but also allows us time to be able to create a great product for you. And I'm hoping that as time goes on, perhaps there's an opportunity to see the work product of other communities that are also working on this, that we can then use as a framework and as a guideline for us, to be able to put together a package that would suit us very, very well. So, that would be my request to the council. Not only do I always request guidance in terms of what direction you want us to go in, Chris mentioned, Chris, correct, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you, Chris. I, up to, right now, six, maybe seven, maybe 52 licenses that are going to be available. Is there a subset of those that you want to consider, or do you want something for all of them? I would, I would prefer to have as much guidance from the council as possible so that we know, as we've had our, our members state in the past, having direction and having a solid target to be able to shoot at is really very, very helpful for us, so that we know exactly what you want and can, and try to satisfy that. And that's the extent of my comments. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering what the benefit would be from the aspect of allowing marijuana retail sales of things and businesses in our village and township, from a monetary position, from a tourist position-
a tourist position. I would think that these types of locations would really attract people to break into them, they would have to be secured. I don't know what kind of garbage or things that come out of that, what the byproducts are. Those byproducts have to be handled in a very special way, if they could be something the kids could get into, if there is some kind of aroma sense filtration. I know that growing marijuana, I understand, has, has got all kinds of issues with it as far as what comes out of it, what goes into the air, whether they're making the oils out of it, whether they're making foods or products or things of that nature. I would myself recommend personally that hold off and make it so that we don't want any licenses in our village, give it six months or a year, see what happens in the surrounding areas, because we know there's going to be a flood of it in the area. Unless we really want to make sure that we have people that can come and buy pot here in our town and compete with the bars and restaurants and the other places for real estate, but if, unless there's a value in higher taxes or something else that's really bringing some value or quality to the village, I really don't think that it's something that we should jump on the bandwagon and say, sure, let's have all this going, no matter if they make a lot of money or not. I don't know if that would be revenue back to us as, as a township or a village, or if it's just going to bring in a crowd of people we might not really want to have coming here into our community. That's all I have.
You know, I might make a quick comment on that. If there, it's the retailer license, if there are retail licenses in the village, some of the tax money will be given back to, on a pro-rated basis, to the retail licenses in a community. But I do want to point out that there is a very complex formula in the statute as to where the money goes that's collected by the state of Michigan. First off, in the first two years of the tax that's collected, $20 million goes to research. And then the next category of where money goes is the state of Michigan itself. So all the regulation of the marijuana businesses will be paid for out of that fund first. As of two months ago, Andrew Brisbo indicated at a meeting that he had 180 employees already. So a lot of money will be going to fund that. And then there's a formula that says counties get so much, the local village gets so much, roads get so much, but, you know, after a while, your particular share will be limited to how many establishments you allow in the village itself that are retail establishments, so.
And Chris, is, there's no clear indication, like what that timeline would be? It could be two years from now, it could be 10 years from now, correct? We just don't know.
When we would start seeing money?
When we would start, if we allowed, when would we start seeing revenue?
Most likely a couple of years.
Yeah. It was interesting, just for your information, the medical marijuana had a, an excise tax that the local units of government that signed up for it were going to be eligible for, but the statute, the rec statute passed and it eliminated that tax. So a number of communities that thought they were going to get the benefit of the excise tax on medical marijuana are no longer going to receive that.